This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 4th, 2017, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones and listening devices are Rosie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator? (inaudible) Borough Administrator.
Sorry, yes, here.
Okay. I don't think there's anyone here from the Library Board this evening, but I did want to make note that two of our very dedicated and longtime volunteers to the Library Board will be retiring from their positions this year. And I just want to tell you that I'm going to be introducing proclamations in their honor. Just to let you know, one is Mr. Carl Wilson, who has served on the Library Board in many capacities for the last 16 years. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And also, one is for Mr. Mark Mappin, who has served on the Library Board for the past 10 years and very recently was the Chair of the Library Board of Directors. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mappin. All right, council reports for this evening. I'm going to start on my right with Councilwoman Cho Han.
It's okay. Um, the Arts Commission has commissioned a Band-Aid sculpture bench for next year. They also, last Thursday, voted on a new member of the Commission. We'd like to welcome Chris Young. We're moving ahead with plans to collaborate with New Brunswick Arts Council on the Windows of Understanding: Seeing Through Hate Window Art Project, and this will launch January 15th of next year. We've been developing a digital art walk for our website and for mobile use so that residents can find out more information about the art walk in the windows of our businesses via their mobile devices or online from home. And again, for next year, we're still in the planning stages of our series Pop Art Panelists from famous pop artists from Highland Park for next year. And we're developing more workshops for all ages, including our preschoolers for 2018. The rec department, our youth basketball teams have been practicing, and games begin January 7th. All adult recreation programs begin January also. A theater performance is set for next month, Legally Blonde Junior. The engineering art chess classes begin next month, and our winter indoor soccer will start January and February. Our community holiday dinner will take place December, Christmas Day, December 25th, 1 to 3 p.m. All are invited. And thank you, Pathari, for hosting our seniors on this month, on the 11th, for their annual holiday luncheon. They really enjoy themselves. And please do remember to go on our website or stop by the center to see all the exciting activities and programs and trips we have in store for 2018. And I just want to mention, I know the mayor and Susie always talks about our wonderful downtown, and last night, me and my husband got to attend Make Me Take Me Trial Pottery Class that they're offering for, like, two people. It's only 11 bucks. We actually, next year, they're offering full sessions. It was hands-on, messy, messy pottery-making classes. My husband made a bowl. I didn't make anything, but it didn't work out so well for me. I wasn't that lucky. But I do encourage everyone to just stop in. There was a lot of residents in there. I got to meet them also. And happy holidays, everyone. That's my report.
And also, it's a great place for kids as well, so...
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize to the public and to Sustainable Highland Park, the Environmental Commission and DPW, but due to my schedule, I wasn't able to write up a full report. But I would report that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, Environmental Commission, and the Sustainable Highland Park have their budgets in and have held them very solidly. I did have, in regard to DPW, I've had a long policy and long-term meeting last week with DPW where I asked them to look out for one year, two years, and three years as to their needs. Glad to report that we also identified some services that we can scale down and try and restrict our budget quite significantly in DPW in some ways. Other than that, I will have a full report when we deal with our long-term year-end reports and year-forward reports in just a few weeks.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The Highland Park Human Relations Commission held its first book club on December 7th at the Senior Youth Center. We had about 10 residents there, most of whom did not know each other, and they participated in a weighty discussion about race, racial identity, and how we participate in racial stereotypes. The book we read this month was Everything I Never Told You by Celeste Ng. There was food, and there was really good discussion. And I just have to say, it was, I love a book club because it forces people to, it forces in the most positive sense, encourages people to come together who don't know each other, brings them out of their comfort zone, and it allows them to discuss. And if the book is right, it allows them to discuss a topic that's germane to issues facing our community. So this is ongoing. I'm pleased to report that our next event will be Sunday, February 11th, at 1:30 p.m. at the Highland Park Public Library. Author Sonia Penigrehi, I think I'm saying that right, will join us to read her book, Nina, the Neighborhood Ninja. Stay tuned for more information, but in the meantime, keep a lookout for that book at the library. We're partnering with the library, so they're going to order extra copies as we identify which book is going to be chosen. On Monday, January 15th, please join the Human Relations Commission at 7:00 p.m. at the Highland Park High School for our annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Humanitarian Awards Program. I'm so proud to announce that this year's humanitarian award recipient is Harry Pangaman, an immigrant rights advocate and the Minister of Facilities and Disaster Relief for churches accomplishing long-term recovery. Stay tuned for more information about this special program, but as usual, there will be entertainment, including professional dancers, steppers, poets, and more. Also, refreshments will follow the program, so please come and break bread with your neighbor as we celebrate our town's deep humanitarian spirit and tradition. The Human Relations Commission will hold its monthly meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, December 20th, 7:00 p.m. here at the lower-level conference room at Borough Hall. Please come. And just a, you know, a note about Harry, if you don't know him, please come out on January 15th and meet him. He is one of our Indonesian refugees and is just an incredible human being and so deserving of this award. So it was, that was good news.
It's good to hear that.
Yeah, yeah. HP Gives a Hoot, in cooperation with Global Grace Cafe, will provide a lunch program at the Senior Youth Center Tuesday, December 26th through Friday, December 29th, for all Highland Park school-aged children, K through 12. Lunch will be provided at the Senior Youth Center at 220 South Sixth Avenue between 11:30 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. each day. No vouchers are needed during winter break, but please complete our short survey, which can be found at www.hpborough.com and on our Facebook page. It's silly to give a URL for Facebook, but the handle is @hpgivesahoot. Yesterday, as liaison to the Highland Park Housing Authority and the Highland Park Affordable Housing Corporation, I participated in a meeting, Affordable Housing Strategies for New Brunswick and the Region, by a great group of student researchers from Rutgers Blaustein. We discussed healthy housing, homeownership, vacant and abandoned properties, and tenant landlord concerns. The Borough's Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs met on December 13th and discussed 2018 goals for the development of the Municipal ID Program and the creation of a nonprofit social services organization were among the topics that we focused on. I'm also pleased to announce that we, that the Commissioners, not I, unanimously elected Isabel Ruano and John Adler as Commission Chair and Vice Chair respectively. These, Isabel and John have been, were on the task force from the outset. They have been incredible contributors to the development of our inclusive community policies, and I look forward to their leadership. And I look forward to just being a regular old liaison and watching them in action. Finally, the Highland Park Municipal ID Program officially launched October 31st. Please get yours here at Borough Hall. You must be 14 years of age and a resident of the Borough of Highland Park. And office hours for applications are Tuesday from 3:30, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Thursdays from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. More details are available, and the application are available, on the Highland Park Municipal Website, www.hpborough.com. I am pleased to report that we are appointing Dan Stern Cardinal as an alternate to the Board of Health. Dan is civic-minded and cares greatly about public health policy in the Borough of Highland Park, so barring any unforeseen congratulations. And I should note that right next to him is Abby Stern Cardinal, who serves on our Public Information Committee, so thank you both for your service to Highland Park. Finally, it's the season for giving. I'm wearing my large pin. This is for you, Gary, an HPTV. I support the Highland Park Food Pantry, and I wondered why it was so big, but I realize it's so people can see it from a distance. We always need donations. It is the season. A majority of charitable donations are given during December, so please contribute to the Highland Park Community Food Pantry. Donations may be made by check payable to the Borough of Highland Park with "food pantry" indicated in the memo field. You may mail donations or drop donations off to the Senior Youth Center, care of Highland Park Food Pantry, 220 South Sixth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, 08904. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Tonight, wanted to just give you some updates on where we are with the teen center. I promised that every council meeting I would give you updates. Couple of weeks ago, the slab was poured, and they now are in the second phase where they are going to put the electric poles in. And once that goes in, whether cooperating with us, today was a beautiful day, they'll have today and tomorrow in which to put all the necessary plumbing and that kind of stuff will go in next. And the wiring for electric poles, they're going to start working on that. And then, the next couple of weeks coming very soon, you'll start seeing a structure. And the structure is going to be in place, so keep, I will be posting on the Facebook page, and I'll keep you updated as to how far along the structure is coming, so keep a lookout for what's going on with the teen center. That being said, we're hoping for continued good weather. While we're hoping for continued good weather, we heard that we may be having some more snow and sleet and everything else. And I just want to remind everyone that when the snow falls, right after the snowfall, please, please go out and clean your walkways so people can walk safely. It's not just for everyone who's walking, so people with strollers, wheelchair walkers, they can have easy access to the sidewalks as well. And I want to encourage the business in particular, that the businesses on Raritan Avenue and Woodbridge Avenue, please make sure that people can get into your establishment, because if they can't get in, that affects your business, your bottom line. So you also need to be very conscious of that and clean the entire sidewalk and also the curb cuts. That being said, one more public safety thing, we are in the throes of all the holiday season. And with that, with having holidays and merriment and everything else, our police department, along with the police department across the state of New Jersey, will be having the program "Stay Sober or Get Pulled Over." And we don't want to see anyone get pulled over. We don't want to see anyone get hurt, so please, as you enjoy your holiday festivities, please do not drink and drive. And I said one more, but there's the last one. As we all are aware, we have a deer problem in town, and we are working hard and looking to see what we can do to solve or bring to some kind of resolution our deer, our deer problem. We've all seen them coming up on our properties throughout town as we go about, and to add to that, we have a little fox problem now. We don't want to scare anyone, but if you do see the fox, please call the police department, and we will try our best to get animal control to come out and help with the situation. With that being said, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, have a safe and prosperous New Year. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Madam Mayor, thank you. I guess I'll just start off by saying that I think it was about a little bit over a year ago that this council adopted a municipal ID card ordinance. And with the course of this year, everybody, all residents should be very thankful for the work of Councilman Matt Hirsch for making the program come to fruition. I myself went out and got my municipal ID card, which also doubles as a library card. I got the barcode on there. And I just urge all residents to take a couple minutes of your time, come down to Borough Hall and get your ID. Throughout the year, the Library Board of Trustees meets on the last Monday of each month, but due to the holidays, the Library Board of Trustees met last night. And last night, the Library Board may note, as the mayor did tonight, of the dedicated volunteer service of the two Highland Park residents, Carl Wilson, who served on the Library Board for 16 years, and Mark Mappin, who served on the Library Board for over 20 years. Now, Mark will be stepping down from the Library Board on December 31st of this year. He served as Board President from 2011 to 2015 and was instrumental in creating the Library Strategic Plan for 2012 to 2015, and we all owe a gratitude to both Mr. Wilson and Mr. Mappin for their service to our borough. This Thursday, December 21st, here at Borough Hall, I'll be meeting with the mayor, the Borough Administrator, and former mayor Stephen Nolan, who has been serving as the Chair of the Borough Shared Services Commission. The purpose of the Shared Services Commission is to make recommendations to the mayor and the Borough Council regarding potential revenue and savings opportunities for Highland Park to pursue. And at the Thursday meeting, Chairman Nolan will share the Commission's recommendations for our consideration. And with that, I want to wish all Highland Park residents happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to thank Mark Mappin and Carl Wilson on their dedication to the Library Board and to our community. I had the pleasure of serving with both of them for about four years, and I wish them the best. I'd like to thank Main Street and Mike Bieberman and Rabbi Shmuley Green for another wonderful menorah lighting that we hosted last weekend. Special thanks to Chris Young and Arnie Weinberg for organizing the very popular Central Jersey pop-up flea markets that were enjoyed this holiday shopping season. Thanks to Main Street Organization, the vendors, the food trucks, our local merchants, and to all the shoppers that keep our downtown active and lively and successful. Thanks to our merchants that have decorated their beautiful windows. Take another walk down Main Street on Raritan Avenue, and you'll see some of the very creative designs some of the shopkeepers have put up for your pleasure. On December 26th, join us for our Kwanzaa celebration hosted by Kinetics. And on this last night of Hanukkah, may your candles burn bright all year long. Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Joyeux Noel, Feliz Navidad, Baldo Karachon, and a very joyous New Year. See you next year.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I wasn't going to, and then Susie handed me a letter that I got really excited about at the meeting right beforehand, but we just got word that the New Jersey Department of Transportation has approved us for local design assistance for our Safe Routes to School Program. We were awarded a grant in 2016 to improve some access, pedestrian accesses to our schools, and this will help save the borough quite a bit of money in designing those ramps and sidewalk improvements that we're wanting to do. So yay, that's very exciting. So it's been a few months in waiting for this, so...
That's good news. Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, I just have a couple of things. Next week, I believe, we're beginning the, our wintertime stretch yoga with the mayor over at Kinetics, so please watch the Facebook page for the borough so you can see when the classes begin. We're working out the schedule right now, so I'm hoping that not only the eight or nine regulars that joined me last year will be coming, I also hope we'll have some additional people coming to do some early morning stretching with me. We also just received notification from an organization called Zippia, which is an online research firm, that Highland Park was ranked number seven in terms of smartest towns in New Jersey, so that's number seven out of 565. All right, guys, come on, we got to move up there. I'll take the number seven, but we always have to look at number one, okay? So that was good news. Our Park Partners Program has been underway. We've gotten 12 applications this year, and the voting session is going to be held on February 25th, so please mark your calendars and come out. Last year, we had hundreds of residents voting for their favorite projects in one of five different categories. I hope you'll all be able to join us again this year. And Councilman Hirsch mentioned the lunch program that Hoot is running during the winter break. I do want to let you know that there is still time to donate to HP Gives a Hoot. The fund has been raising money over the last few years in order to help provide food and other necessities to our children in Highland Park who would otherwise go without some food or the things they need for school if, when schools are closed and parents are at work. So you can drop off your donations here at the borough and bring them into Monica's office? Is that where they go?
For her?
Yeah, into Monica Jackson's office. She's at the lower level here. All right, any public discuss, oh, I'm sorry, Council?
Just to mention one other thing. There are several very worthwhile organizations in town that can use your contributions at this time of year. Our Police Department, PBA, our Fire Department, our First Aid Squad, the Highland Park Ed Foundation, the Food Pantry, Gives a Hoot, and what have I forgotten? Is that six? I think that's it. Anything else?
I think there's a lot of charities that people can give to. I'm wearing my Food Pantry pin tonight.
Yes, okay, just wanted to remind everyone. Thank you.
And I may be the result, I may be responsible for bringing Highland Park's intelligence quotient down to seven. I just want to take responsibility.
Okay, you too. Okay, is there any public discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on. May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just for the public, it's common at the end of the year to transfer funds that haven't been used in one account to other accounts. It's just a balancing of the annual budget. I vote yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
It's nice that you're not having difficulty with my last name. Yes. I'm practicing.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay. Borough Administrator, would you like to talk to that before the vote?
Sure. It's for the purchase of water. It's simply, there aren't, we did not, it was an incorrect budget appropriation for this year. We didn't allocate enough money in that line, and we need to basically make arrangements so that we can pay for that final quarter.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
On the consent agenda, I'd like a motion to adopt the items number 12 through 28.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, could you just speak to number 12 for a moment?
Yes, I can speak to that briefly, thank you. If you, Councilman Fine is asking for a little bit of an explanation of item number 12 on the consent agenda, which is approval of agreement between the Borough of Highland Park and Fair Share Housing Center concerning Mount Laurel Fair Share Obligations. For those of you who are not aware, the municipality has been in litigation over COA units, or fair share of affordable housing units, since 2009, I believe, Borough Attorney?
Correct.
And we are very, very close right now to an agreement, which is what we just voted on with the Fair Share Housing people on accepting a number for our COA obligation for the next, I believe it's 25 years?
To 2025.
Till 2025. And that number, we feel very confident we'll be able to achieve in the short term. The governing body has approved this resolution tonight. It will be going to the Planning Board on Wednesday for a discussion, I guess that's tomorrow, where it will be discussed and explained to them, after which we, it goes to the fairness hearing. Am I correct?
There will be a fairness hearing.
There will be a fairness hearing, and sometime between the approvals of the governing body and the Planning Board, we are hoping to, and the fairness hearing, we are hoping to have an open public meeting where we can explain the details behind this agreement in greater detail. So please watch for an invitation to come to hear more about this particular resolution. I am very pleased and hopeful that this will be the end of eight years of very expensive litigation for the municipality, and we'll all be able to celebrate that after agreement with all the parties and the courts. Thank you. I am, this evening, I'm appointing Daniel Stern Cardinal as alternate number one to the Board of Health. May I have a motion to confirm him?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Any public discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
So moved.
Oh, Mrs. Picard, I didn't see you moving up here.
Move to reopen publicly?
Do I have to?
So, yeah, second.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to bring to your attention, since you're talking to the microphones...
Thank you. And Mrs. Bicard, if I don't see you, just raise your hand. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yeah. Okay, now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you.
Wish everyone a good holiday?
Is adjourned.